And first order of business, would you join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want to welcome all of you here this evening, and also for those that may be watching on YouTube later on. This is our May 18th regular city council meeting for the city of Minnetrista. If you have electronic devices, I would ask that you put them on silent, remind you to do that. And also be considerate of those around you and maybe keep your talking to a minimum so others can hear. Next, I need approval, well, I'll do introductions first. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and to my left is Councilmember Patricia Thol, Councilmember Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortensen, Bob Christians, both councilmembers. And then on the end is our city engineer, Paul Hornby. To my right is our city administrator, Mike Broney. Absent this evening is Brian Grimm due to a personal issue and a family matter. And next is our city community development coordinator, city planner, David, I'm still having trouble with your title, David Abel. And next name is our city attorney, Ron Beatty, and then our police chief, Paul Falls. And we also have our city clerk, who is taking the minutes for us, Chris Lindquist over here. Thank you very much. With that, approval of our agenda. We're going to have one addition to our consent agenda, and that's approval of our surface water CIP, as we discussed in our work session. So that'll be consent agenda number 4G. Also, just FYI, it's just under business items, number C. It should be Resolution 86-15, approve agreement for right of entry. It shouldn't say professional services, again, just minor. And then number F and G, it should say approve professional service agreement for the 2015 mill and overlay improvement project. And the same for the following one, approve professional service agreement for the 2015 crack ceiling. Those are under items 6, F and G. Any other additions? Hearing none, then is there a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as corrected.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Motion as been made and seconded to approve the agenda with those additions and corrections. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we have special presentations. Possibly, we were going to have Senator Ozmic here, but I see he's not. I'm assuming he's very busy at the Capitol this evening, so maybe he'll join us at a later time, another meeting. Next, we have our financial audit presentation, Mr. Clifton Larson.
Let me introduce Mayor, the two folks here from Clifton Larson Allen, our financial auditor company. Mr. Dennis Hugavine, who's a principal, and Mr. Lucas Chase, who's a senior associate with Clifton Larson Allen. And they're going to walk you through a PowerPoint, and we've distributed information to you in printed form as well. And they will walk you through our financial audit for 2014, so Dennis?
Thanks for having us. We are here tonight to present the audit reports from the year ended December 31st, 2014. So in front of you, we pass out some packets of information. The largest, of course, is the city's CAFER. A CAFER is a comprehensive annual financial report. The city is holding itself to a higher standard than most cities do in that you apply for the certificate of excellence in financial reporting issued by the GFOA program, Governmental Finance Officers Association. So it's got a lot more historical information, a transmitter at the front. It involves more work for the finance staff, but I do think, you know, bond rating agencies, you know, people that hold your debt do hold that in high regard as far as the fact that you're holding yourself to a higher standard. So we fully expect, we can't guarantee anything, but the 2013 version of the CAFER did win the award. We fully expect the 2014 will continue to qualify for the award. We generally, generally, the reviewers of those programs will nitpick enough, you know, they will not stop reviewing until they can send a few comments your way. So every year, you can expect some few nits here and there, but we address those, and then there'll be new ones, you know, next year, because no one wants to review something and say it was perfectly complete. So I've never seen one that was completely error-free, so they tend to look until they find something. But anyway, our thanks goes out to Brian Grimm, I realize he's not here tonight, but to all the staff that he works with as well, they do a really fantastic job. This was our second year performing the city's audit, so we appreciated all the hard work that went into that. First year is much more painful than a second year, I can tell you, but it went very smoothly. We're very happy with the results and very happy with the relationship. My, I guess you can ask Brian for yourself when you see him, but my sense from talking to him, and I guess our exit meeting with the city administrator, like, my indications were that they were pleased with our audit staff, and we were pleased with the work and the very helpful cooperative nature of the city staff. So very much appreciated. So tonight, we're just going to go through the highlights of those reports, not go through them in any detail, but to the extent you have specific questions, since you have them available in electronic format, we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have either as we go along or at the end, however you prefer to do that. So our agenda tonight is just strictly to go through some of the required letters, the required communications letter, the audit results. Of course, the main thing you're hiring us to do is keep an open opinion on audited financial statements, so we'll go through the results of that, and then some financial outcomes, just at a fairly high level, and then just clean up to some future GASB pronouncements that are going to have an impact on your financial statements in the future. So one of the letters that you've got in front of you is called the required communications letter. And it's just, I don't know, it's a pretty lengthy letter, but basically, we've cut the highlights out of here and put them in this PowerPoint. So again, just as a reminder, we're providing reasonable, but not absolute assurance of the accuracy and completeness of the audit city's financial statements, because to give absolute assurance would require us to look at every single transaction. Of course, that would not be very cost prohibitive for us to look at every single transaction. So it's very much a risk-based approach, random sampling, so that basically, the city staff have no choice but to assume that every transaction is available to be just as much, you know, likely to be selected as any other. So it's sort of accomplishes that objective in a much more cost-effective way, but for that reason, we're not able to provide absolute assurance. But that's very standard in all auditing situations. There were no new GASB standards implemented in 2014. There's a review of what those most significant accounting estimates were that went into the drafting of the CAFER. That was the useful eyes of capital assets, the valuation of investments, and then the valuation for post-employment benefits. And as I said, we received the full cooperation from management, appreciated that very much. So in terms of the financial statements themselves, we're issuing an unmodified, also known as a clean opinion on your audited financial statement, so it's as good of an audit opinion as we're able to give any governmental entity that we audit here in Minnesota. As part of our audit, we're required to issue a letter on your internal controls. Some years, we may have to report some kind of exception in that regard, but for 2014, no exceptions were noted as far as your internal control structure, so. The other letter that we're required to issue is for Minnesota legal compliance. There's a number of state statutes that we have to test your compliance with based on guidance from the Office of the State Auditor. It's a very thick, comprehensive checklist, so there's lots of different ways you could get dinged for one issue or another. But the thing that we came up with in our testing was that there were three invoices which were paid past either the invoice due date or 35 days. So I think, as we discussed in our exit meeting, I think a couple of them, there were an unreasonably short period that your vendors had specified that the payments were due. It wasn't the 35-day normal period, it was much shorter. So if you have any questions on that, but we discussed them at length, and we're confident that the issues had been addressed or that in the future, it would be better documented as if there was an outstanding issue that caused the payments to not be made within those timeframes. Because if it's a legitimate dispute over something, or the order was incomplete, there's lots of ways around that, but it has to really be documented as such for that being the basis for not meeting those due dates. So again, in the big scheme of things, about as minor as minor gets, because there's lots of different ways, as I said, that you could have a legal compliance exception. In terms of the operating results of the general fund, I know one of the things you're always interested in is where the fund balance ended up at the end of the year. So this graph is just showing the unreserved, or now known as the unassigned fund balance. And you can see for 2014, it was slightly higher at the end of the year as a percentage of expenditures than it had been at the end of the prior year. I generally get questions from school boards and city council members as far as what's a reasonable fund balance for a city in this case, or a school district in the case of a school board, of course. But for a city this size, what I did was, I just went to the Office of the State Auditor, and of course, we don't have 2014 information published yet, because we're just finishing those audits now, so that hasn't been published yet. But if you were to go back to 2013, you'd see for that cities in that fourth class, you know, that are in that 2,500 to 10,000 population, the percentage of unassigned fund balance for the governmental funds, the general fund and the special revenue funds, I don't have it broken out specifically just for the general fund, but the average for the cities of that size was at 73.1% at December 31st of 2013. Overall statewide, the average was 46%. So as you get a bigger city, the percentage goes down, but for cities of that size, the 2,500 to 10,000, it was about 73.1%, just to give you a frame of reference. So cities generally are going to automatically be at about a 50% because of the timing of tax collections. When we all pay our residential tax bills, you know, in May and October, that's when that gets remitted. So cities are cash flowing themselves up until the time that tax dollars starts flowing into the city. So again, you sort of assume, again, in smaller cities typically have a larger fund balance, as I said, as indicated by the statistics on the State Auditor's office. But again, my only point of that is to make the point that it's been very consistent, and it's not excessive by, you know, comparing to, it's certainly available for certain investments that you want to do. And we're going to, I think, in a future slide, maybe talk about some of the things you can do as far as committing some of that fund balance and stating publicly what the intended purpose is. But again, as a percentage of unassigned fund balance, it's not excessive in our opinion. The next slide is just showing the percentage of the makeup of the general fund revenue in 2014, and then the four prior years prior to that. Because the licenses and permits went up significantly, and I think a lot of that related to the developments of the Woodland Cove and a lot higher instance of licenses and permits for new housing and different construction projects. So it just forced the percentage now from property taxes to go down, even if the dollar amounts hadn't changed all that much. But I think that in looking in the CAFER, your revenue from licenses and permits in the general fund is about 156,000 higher than what the final limited budget was. So again, just an indication that there's a lot more activity there than what had originally planned. And it's reflecting itself in terms of the percentage of revenue that was derived from that source in 2014. In terms of expenditures, I think if you were to read through the front, and I always encourage councilmembers to read the section at the front called Management's Discussion and Analysis, because it does give that little insight there. If you're not a kind of member that wants to read things from cover to cover, at least in one fell swoop, the section I really concentrate on is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, because Brian does a good job of incorporating those little commentaries as far as what the reasonings were for the changes in expenditures. And one of the things he observed in there is that the public safety was over budget by about 114,000 for the need for more street maintenance supplies that had been expected due to some flooding, but that was offset by some additional FEMA reimbursements. So on governmental accounting, you get to see the expenditure separated from the revenue. So on this slide, we're just looking at the expenditure side of it, but on the preceding slide, the revenues were also corresponding higher for those FEMA reimbursements. So again, it all made sense, once you read through the context of that Management's Discussion and Analysis. The next slide is just comparing those three components, then, the unassigned fund balance and the general fund against revenues and expenditures. And you just happen to hit a five-year trend here where the revenues all exceeded, not by much in some years, but the revenues exceeded the expenditures. And again, it doesn't have to happen that way, it's pretty typical in governments that that's how that works out. But you could have some years when you have an unexpected expenditure flooding, for example, or something else, you know, some unexpected street program or something that had to be accomplished where the expenditures would be higher and you actually spend down some of that fund balance. But again, very, very traditional, very typical of what we would see in a city's general fund comparison of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. The next slide is what I was getting at earlier, where one of the areas you really have been incorporating a need for that. But you can see in 2011 and 2012, you were using a category of fund balance called committed. And again, that's where I was getting at. If you wanted to state publicly prior to year-end that you wanted to set aside X number of dollars for certain things, like for road projects or something else, if you have a particular thing you want to address with your constituency, one of the ways you could do that is to pull money out of the unassigned category and put it in a committed category. So there's different rules for all of these. Unassigned, you can, as a council, give that authority to the city administrator or the finance director and say, they can decide after, year-end after the audit is complete, how much they want to put in the assigned category. The committed category can only be done through actual, formal action of the council. It only ties your hands to the extent that if you formally commit funds, then to undo it, you take formal action to undo it. But again, that's, you know, pretty much how you control purse strings and things like that. But it's one of the areas where you could actually take some money out of one category, put it in another, and for public purposes, state this is what you're setting aside for specific things that you want to accomplish, again, to meet the needs of constituency. I'm going to ask Lucas to walk us through the enterprise funds.
All right, so this one, is this showing you your unrestricted net position for all the enterprise funds? You'll see in 2013, there was a big jump there, and that's because actually, in that year, you're 491, 492, the capital project funds related to the water and sewer were then merged with the water and sewer funds. So then you have a big jump there. And you actually compare 2013, 2014, you'll see it's pretty consistent in the stormwater and the sewer funds. And there's a little increase in the water. That's mostly related to, let's see here, increases in your connection fees and meter sales due to development, again. Changes in your market value, last year, there was a little loss on your change in market value investments, and this year, you actually had a gain. And then you had some fees from developers for development agreements that showed up your miscellaneous revenues there. And this will show your financial results for the water fund itself. You notice this year that there's actually an operating gain of about 101,000, whereas last year, there was a little bit of a loss, about 130,000. But both years, there is actually still a gain when you add back in your depreciation, and there's positive cash flows. And I think all the past five years, there's positive cash flows from operations in your water fund. This shows the same thing for your sewer fund. Consistent with prior, there was a slight loss, but there's positive income before depreciation, and there's positive cash flows, again. Revenues are up a little bit, you had a large increase in connection fees, again, because of your developments and your area charges, same reason, then your gains on investments compared to the loss in the prior year there as well. And this shows your same slide for your stormwater fund. This is very consistent with the prior year. There was a slight loss, but had positive income before depreciation in your stormwater fund and positive cash flows overall and from operations in your stormwater fund. And this slide shows you your cash, your debt service payments coming up here. This is actually excluding any refunded amounts in 2014. And also, there was an advance refunding issued in '14 for '15, and that's been excluded from the '15 column there. And you'll see that '14 is a little higher than all, because you had about $980,000 in prepaid special assessments that are applied towards your 2013 A bonds, the related debt. And if there isn't any questions there, I'm going to pass it back off to Dennis.
So one of the things that we've typically, along with that city councils find interesting sometimes is in terms of the tax rate comparisons, you know, we put them in a list right there in the first column, and then you've got the statewide average, the region average, and some neighboring cities. So again, you're right in the middle, nothing excessive, but again, it's always good to kind of see where you land in terms of your different kinds of governments that are also levying taxes. So again, just therefore, out of interest of no particular concern or anything to draw to your attention, just thought you'd find that interesting, again. Next slide is, just wanted to briefly mention GASB 68. We mentioned this last year, again, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board gets to decide what constitutes governmental financial statements. And they've decided that the statewide pension plans, the unfunded portion of that has never really shown up on any governmental financial statements anywhere. And since there's no governmental entity responsible for paying the unfunded portion of the state pension plans, in this case, PERA, they decided that that's going to go on to every governmental financial statement after this year. So December 31st of 2015, you are going to get a report, we are going to get a report from the PERA office that allocates your portion, your proportionate share of the unfunded portion of the statewide pensions, and it's going to go on to your financial statements, but not the general fund, not the special, you know, the individual funds. It's just at that entity-wide perspective that we don't typically spend a lot of time talking about. It's where you slam the entire governmental financial statement into one column, and you add in the capital assets and net of depreciation and your long-term debt, and you come up with a net position total. Well, so you're going to have this liability for your share of that unfunded pension liability going on that particular financial statement. We haven't talked about it in terms of any slides. It's already been taken into account in terms of bond rating agencies and debt holders and things like that. You're in the same boat as everybody else, but it's the first time in history of a governmental financial statement that we're putting a liability on your financial statements that you, as a city council, had nothing to say about. You don't decide statewide pension plans for PERA, but yet, you're getting your share of that unfunded liability put on your books. So the good news is, in state of Minnesota, our pension plans are funded at a fairly high percentage compared to other states. So it could be worse, not that that's any consolation, but if we lived in like a California or Illinois where they're severely, severely underfunded in terms of their pension plans, there'd be a huge, much bigger liability going on to your individual financial statements than what we have here in Minnesota. So that's the heads up, and if you have any concerns about it. But we'll be giving you more bullet points and talking points so that it not misrepresent it or miscommunicate it in terms of, you know, reporting in the newspaper or anything like that, because again, we want to keep emphasizing that that is a new liability going on your books, but you had no say in it. It's nothing you control, and everybody's in the same boat as far as school districts and cities and counties and everybody else. Everybody who participates in those plans is going to have their percentage of liability reflected on their financial statements. And again, just to reemphasize, you do qualify for the GFOA certificate of achievement, and we fully expect the 2014 version of that will also qualify for that award. I did include my contact information and also Michelle Hoffman as the manager. She couldn't be here tonight, but in case you did have any particular questions regarding the day-to-day aspects of it, you know, feel free to contact either of us, or Lucas, of course. But that's what we wanted to go over with you as far as the audit deliverables. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you'd have for us.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions? I know it's very exciting information for us that are not accountants. If you're not an accountant, yeah. But we appreciate all your hard work, and of course, you're bringing this to us and informing us of this and that. So we do appreciate that, so.
Thank you for having us.
And some of the information that you presented this evening was also good, just, you know, the tax rate and how it compares to other cities, and that kind of thing is good information, so. Any questions of the council? Okay, thank you very much. Next, under special presentations, we have Kurt Ostrowski. And Mr. Broney, do you want to make a?
Yes, Mr. Ostrowski called me and asked to be on the council agenda to talk with the council on the milfoil treatment. And so we allowed him to be here tonight to speak with you about that.
Hi.
Good evening.
Kurt Ostrowski, 3510 Tuxedo Road. I'm here representing the folks that live out on our road to discuss the milfoil treatment that we've done in the past. Last year, with the high water and the shakeup in government and administration, we never got in on the agenda. So we're hopping forward a year and hoping that we can request a contribution to go towards that treatment in Phelps Bay this year. We have the city of Shorewood, that's accepted already. City of Mound has on the agenda a meeting to go over that. And we would like to request $4,500 if at all possible to help the residents foot the bill for that program. DNR will be contributing again this year. They're looking at $100 per acre, is that right, Josh?
Correct.
Okay. And the bay treatment has grown, how many total bays are included now?
There are seven.
Seven. So, you know, when we started this pilot program, we had the three bays. So it's proven to be successful, it continues to grow throughout the lake. And we'd like to keep it going. It has made a big difference, and this year, with the low water, the milfoil is almost to the top already. If you're in four feet, five feet of water, and it's not even through the end of the lake. It's going to be thick.
So a couple of questions, if I may. One, this is no longer a pilot program, obviously, because that ended several years ago. And my understanding was they didn't treat last year because of the high water and because of the water flowing and so on. They didn't think that it could actually do much good because of that. And so that's why it wasn't done. But when you say the DNRs, how much is it to treat Phelps Bay?
This year, the projection is going to be 40 grand, is that right?
And that final number will be decided?
Josh, can you please come to the podium, and then, I'm sorry, state your name, please, for the?
My name is Josh Letty, I'm the Bay Project Manager, also with the Lake Minnetonka Association. I'll have to excuse my voice, I had some food poisoning last night, and I've been throwing up the last day.
Okay.
Yes, what kind of question?
Okay, so it's 40,000, how much is the DNR contributing?
They'll be contributing $100 per acre of that treatment area.
And how much is that total?
We'll have that answer in about a week and a half.
Okay.
The weather's just been a little bit difficult to go out there and do mapping. As soon as the water level hits about, or the water temperature hits about 50, 55 degrees is when we concentrate on curly leaf pond weed. So that treatment has already been done in specific bays that do have curly leaf pond weed, and now it is transitioning over to mapping the area for your regional water milfoil. And we'll have that answer in about a week here.
Okay, and then you said that Shorewood and Mound are contributing?
Correct. Shorewood has contributed $6,000 to the combination of Phelps and Gideon's, 1,800 of which goes to Gideon's, 4,200 of which goes to Phelps here. And we're going to be requesting double these portions over at Mound, because although there are seven bays in the Bay Project, we have had East Phelps and West Phelps be separate in previous years, and now we're just recognizing them all as one. So now, the amount of area that Mound has in Phelps is much larger, so we're going to be requesting
Sure.
a significantly more, significantly higher amount than 4,000.
Okay. And how many residents are in Phelps Bay that, is there 100?
It's, yeah, on Minnetrista's side, there's 12 residents. So Mound actually has, I think, 110. And Shorewood was in the neighborhood of 25 or 35, is that something?
That's a good ballpark.
Okay. Well, I think what we're going to have to do here this evening, and I'll take it to the council here, we're going to have to have a discussion on this. We just got done with the work session where we talked about having a policy in place for paying for trees. So this is kind of on that same level. I think we need a policy, because it's really hard to just kind of willy-nilly randomly dole out dollars to various organizations when they ask. So I think the policy needs to come first, and I understand you're under a timeframe, because you're probably going to be treating sometime in June, probably for the milfoil. Did you have to treat for curly leaf pond weed this year?
No, Phelps doesn't traditionally have curly leaf pond weed.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. So I'm not sure if we're going to have So, I'm not sure if we're going to have, unless the council has some express desire to contribute without that policy in place, maybe I can get some comments from the council?
I believe it wasn't the budget for 2014, however, without making that contribution happen, the project wasn't renewed until 2015.
Right. And this is a good, good project, I'm not saying it's not, I just, again, we just had this lengthy discussion about when to fund something and when not to, and we're talking about 12 Minnetrista residents, our property owners, that this might benefit, and you're asking for, you know, what was it, 4,000, $4,500? So, those are policy discussions that we need to have, and also, we generally aren't going to make a decision under this venue. We'd have to have staff bring back some more information as well. So, I'm not sure if this is going to help you for this year. We'll do what we can, but we're not going to make any promises today. Does that sound fair, Mr. Brony or Mr. Abel?
I believe so, Mayor.
Okay. So, what we would do is let you know when we have those discussions and what the outcome of those discussions would be, and I'm assuming you have your name and number, contact information with staff, so they could contact you then after that?
Yeah. If you figure out which questions, certainly, we'll just know we can pull that information.
Yeah.
I'll obviously have information as far as mapping results in about a week to...
And that would be helpful to have, so if you could get that to staff, too, that would be great.
No problem. I'll have it right for you guys when it's ready.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed something. Could you just, one more, you said there were 12 residents on Phelps Bay, Minnetrista, approximately 110 in Mound, but what else?
Shorewood.
Shorewood had, roughly.
I think it's near 30, 35.
30, 35 in Shorewood, right?
I would have to go back and check.
That's fine, close enough.
These numbers are coming from 2012 or '13, because last year, we kind of just aborted because the water was too high.
Right, right.
There was confusion throughout.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And even though there are only 12 residents in Minnetrista, we're also taking into consideration the area that is city-owned in that bay, where residents are not living. So, when we factor in the whole bay, you're looking at the whole bay, we're kind of trying to break it up evenly based on what the city represents in that bay, and that's why when we're looking at Mound, Mound has a couple islands on that bay, and we're really trying to get them to contribute, so.
Okay, yeah, we understand. Any other questions by the council? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That now concludes our special presentations for this evening, so we'll move on to persons to be heard, and we had one person sign up. It's Susan Arvig from Yellowstone Trail. Just kind of briefly, for your information, persons to be heard is a time where residents can come and address the council on an item that's not on the agenda, and you have three minutes to address the council. We generally don't take action on that, but we can choose to put it on a later date, so welcome.
First, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'd like to thank you for starting the meeting with a pledge. That was very nice, and I'm afraid I used to take it for granted, but I no longer do, so thank you. I'm Susan Arvig, and I'm actually representing Jamin and Alyssa Arvig, who live at 5355 Yellowstone Trail in Palmer Point. They have the lowest lot in the neighborhood, and so the water drains in their backyard, and consequently, they have a storm sewer drain there. That drain is several inches high, and it has very large openings. Actually, my foot will fit in there, and so if my foot fits in there, we know that a child's foot will fit very easily. We have a lot of children in the neighborhood, as well as just at this address, that like to come and play there because it's an attraction, and I see them poking sticks down there, paper, rocks, all kinds of stuff, and using it kind of for a home base for some kind of game. So, Arvigs are very concerned about liability. Jamin asked me to contact Gary Peters, which I did, and was told that the city does not want to replace that with a grate with smaller openings because of potential liability for flooding for the basement if we were not to maintain it. It would be very foolish for Arvigs not to maintain it, because they're the only one that have a problem if it would flood. To us, it seems like the potential liability is much greater for a child being hurt than it is for one basement to have a water problem. Jamin, who is an attorney, told me to look up the definition of attractive nuisance, which I did, and you know what that is. I did not. Okay, then may I read it, because I didn't know either. "It's a dangerous condition on a landowner's property that may attract children onto the land and may involve risk or harm to their safety. Because child trespassers may not appreciate the risks that the dangerous condition poses, landowners have the duty to either eliminate that danger or make it inaccessible to trespassing children." We are obviously not able to eliminate that danger, but we would like to alleviate it as much as possible, and so I'm here tonight to request you to consider replacing that grate with one that would be flatter and have smaller openings so little feet cannot get in there and break their legs.
Yeah.
I do have pictures of the current grate.
Sure.
I have...
If you can hand them to Mr. Falls, and then he can hand those out?
Oh, sure.
What we'll have to do is send this to staff, and they'll have to bring it back. Would this be something you could bring back at our next meeting?
I'll turn to Mr. Hornby, is that something you think we could discuss?
We could discuss this in our meeting.
Okay. And if staff can discuss it at a staff meeting and figure out a solution, you don't have to bring it back, that's fine, too.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much for considering that.
All right, yeah, thank you. Okay. So, that, those are the only people I had under persons to be heard, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Again, it's rather lengthy, but it's consent agenda item A, approve our regular meeting minutes from May 4th, 2015. Approve our work session minutes from May 4th, 2015. Resolution number 76-15, approving claims. Resolution number 77-15, approve a simple subdivision for a lot combination, an application from D.R. Horton in the Orchard Cove subdivision on lot, on outlot A. Number E, a proposed amendment change to section 400 dash, 400.01 of the City Code Regarding Administration and Enforcement of the Building and Electrical Codes. In order number 428, adopt amendment to section 400.01 regarding administration and enforcement of the building and electrical codes. In ordinance, in resolution number 78-15, authorize publication of ordinance 428 by title and summary. In number F, accept the resignation from David Lang as a representative from the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District LMCD Board. In number nine, a resolution number 79-15, approve the St. Boniface Fire Department pension increase. In H is what we added, approval of a surface water CIP plant.
Do you want to go ahead, Chris?
Yeah, the accepted resignations from the David...
That's what I thought was on, I must have a different one.
It's on the business.
It's on the business item.
So, it's not on the, so, all the items that you mentioned minus that one.
I'm sorry, I have two, two here, and I'm probably reading off of the other one. Yes, so, that is under business items. Thank you.
It was a previous draft.
Yes, okay, that's why, too many drafts. All right. With that, is there approval for a number for the items I just listed, less the resignation letter?
See, I have one question.
Yes.
Mike, we had a brief discussion about this earlier today when we talked at 10 o'clock pertaining to the codes, electrical codes.
Yes.
That's a big move in the right direction, but also, as you know, the permits and so forth for plumbing fall into that same state category. Is there a upcoming thing that's going to be looked at also for plumbing?
Mr. Abel might be helping with that.
Well, for state, for commercial buildings, it would go through the state, but not for residential, our new building official, Jessica, can...
For the plumbing?
Yes.
Because one of the things in the past, obviously, the electrical permits, being state, was somewhat time-consuming, and now you can go to your computer at midnight with your underwear and apply for a permit and have it shortly, so that's a big move in the right direction, so, thank you. I just want to get a clarification on the plumbing side. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, any other questions or, okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item A, B, C, D, E, and E-I, or E1, E2, and F and G.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Vanderlinde seconded? Okay? All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have public hearings, and Ms. Lindquist, we have a renewal of our liquor license for West Tonka Recreation Association and for Burl Oaks Golf Club.
Yes, I'm Madam Mayor and members of council. The West Tonka Recreation Association, so known as WRA, along with Burl Oaks Golf Club, applied to renew their liquor licenses. Per state statute, the Minnetrista City Code requires that an opportunity shall be given to any person to be heard for or against the granting of the license. According, a public hearing must be held for each individual application. The WRA Association, they currently have a 3-2 license with the incidental sales of pop candy and bag snacks. Their sales hours are during the adult softball, baseball hours, tournament, and special events. Sales are not permitted during youth-only games. The applicant has submitted all required materials, including the required fee, proof of insurance, and proof of alcohol compliance training, which that will expire in June, so we will require them to renew that. The Minnetrista Public Safety Department has conducted, and the applicant has passed all legally required background and compliance checks. As in the past, staff would recommend approval of the on-sale 3-2 malt liquor license renewal with the following conditions. No alcohol beverages may be permitted on the property except those sold by WRA. No alcoholic beverages may leave the premise. All required postings and law must be followed. All staff and volunteers serving or selling alcohol must receive training regarding the selling and serving of liquor to customers. And from what I understand, they have two managers that go through this training that train their volunteers. No alcohol may be served during youth-only events. On-site ability to call 911, 911 must be provided. A weather alert radio must be installed and operating when the public is present. The liquor license is not transferable. All other conditions set forth by Minnetrista City Code and Minnesota state statutes shall be followed. The applicant must maintain the required levels of insurance coverage for the duration of the license period. Lapse of insurance coverage may result in the suspension or revocation of the liquor license. Delinquent taxes, assessments, utility charges, or service fees may result in suspension or revocation of the liquor license. A conviction of any violation of laws of the state of Minnesota or the city of Minnetrista relating to intoxicating or non-intoxicating alcohol may result in the suspension or revocation of the liquor license. Burl Oaks Golf Club, they applied to sell intoxicating liquor, wine, and beer. Their sale hours are during the golf hours, tournaments, and special events, as well as during the operating hours of the Oak Grill, the golf club's private dining facility. They also applied to renew their Sunday liquor license to permit them to continue to serve alcohol on Sundays, as approved by the Minnetrista voters and certified by the Minnetrista City Council during the 1992 general election. They also submitted all required materials and proof of insurance. There have been no complaints regarding liquor, any liquor issues in the last past year. The Minnetrista Public Safety Department has conducted, and the applicant has passed all background and compliance checks. As in the past, staff would also recommend approval of the on-sale intoxicating liquor license renewal with the same conditions as WRA. So, staff recommendation is to approve the renewal of the on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license with the conditions recommended by staff for the WRA, for the property located at 7201 County Road 110 West, and also to approve the renewal of the on-sale club liquor license and special Sunday liquor license with conditions recommended by staff for the Burl Oak Golf Club for the property located at 5400 North Arm Drive.
Does council have any questions of staff? Otherwise, this is, these are public hearings, so if not, I'll open it up for the public hearing. Okay? So, this is a public hearing, so I'm opening it up for any comments from the public for or against these, both applications. Okay, anybody don't think so? So, I will close the public hearing and take it back to the council. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the renewal license for WRA, and also a motion to approve the renewal of this license for Burl Oaks.
As stated, as staff stated with the recommendations. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the renewal with staff's recommendations and as stated, so, any further questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes. So, next, we have a proposed amendment change to the city code, and this is a fee schedule change, also relating to liquor license applications.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council. In doing research on the city fee schedule, it was noted that there is not a fee for a background investigation fee for new license applications for a liquor license. I did a, as you can see in the staff report, I did survey a few of the neighboring communities. And per state statute, the cities are allowed to charge up to $500 to the applicant for the background investigation fee, because they do get quite lengthy. You have financials, you have to go through tax statements, extensive background checks, criminal background checks, to make sure that there's no alcohol-related incidences. As noted in the neighboring communities, some of them are as low as 200, and some of the neighboring communities have the maximum 500. After talking with Chief Falls and myself, we came up with approximately $250 to cover staff time to conduct these background checks. And this is just for new licenses coming in to the city. This would not be for renewals.
Okay, so renewals are different because they're not quite as extensive?
Correct.
Okay, and these would be for new licenses?
Right, and we're looking for, in the future, we're just trying to set...
Right.
Standards for it.
Right, exactly. Okay. Any questions or comments? Because this, too, because it's a fee schedule, is a public hearing, and so we'll, is that correct, Mr. Beatty? Okay. So, we'll open it up then for the public hearing. Okay, so, anybody that wishes to speak for or against this new fee, be $250 for background checks for an applicant when they apply for a new liquor license. So, I'll open it up. Hearing, seeing nobody interested in speaking for or against, I'll close it and take it back to the council. What is your pleasure, council? I'm looking for approval of the ordinance number 426, adopt amendment to the city code for the city fee schedule.
Comment now or later?
You can comment now, that's fine.
Just wanted to state that it seems to me to make sense that the cost of the background check should be incurred by the applicant, not the city, so I think this is a positive move.
Absolutely, yep, yep. So, is that a motion, Ms. Thol?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have, this is not a public hearing, it's a resolution authorizing the publication of ordinance 426 by title and summary. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, we still need to do the resolution 8215, authorizing publication of ordinance 426 by title and summary.
That's what I just said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So, that's why I'm saying, a resolution 82-15, authorizing publication of ordinance 426 by title and summary is not a public hearing, even though it's under a public hearing section. So, is that correct, Mr. Beatty?
That's correct.
Okay. So, is there a motion to authorize publication of ordinance 426 by title and summary?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes. And next, we have a proposed amendment change to the city code, chapter 12, liquor. Ordinance number 427, adopt amendment to the city code, chapter 12, liquor. I believe this would be a public hearing? No?
Madam Mayor, council members, no, even though it's indicated on your agenda as a public hearing, it is not.
Okay, but we would still have our city clerk give us a background on this?
I think I will give you the...
Okay, thank you. All right.
Just, I think a little bit of confusion, whenever, I mean, most ordinances do not require public hearings.
Correct.
When an ordinance affects a fee for liquor licenses, that is a public hearing requirement, which is why the previous item was, but a regular text amendment to the liquor ordinance does not trigger that requirement. This is a, somewhat related to the previous item, in that it stems from a recent inquiry from someone who's interested in opening a facility in the city. It really caused the city to kind of take a look at... It really caused the city to kind of take a look at its, the text of the liquor ordinance. Liquor is regulated pretty heavily by the state. Lots of provisions are preemptive in the sense that the city cannot, a city cannot change a statute. There are some other provisions, though, where cities are allowed some flexibility. In this case, one of the things that Minnetrista does is adopt a number of definitions from state statute, which is a pretty common provision. One of which is the definition of restaurant. A term of which is that a restaurant has to be a place where food is served on a regular basis. There's no definition of what a regular basis is. The state decide, has decided by policy that that means five or more days per week. It's not in the statute, it's not in the regulations. That's simply their working definition. And so it's, it's not a matter of law, but it's just a matter of their practice. This ordinance liberalizes that, if you adopt it, it's a policy decision, liberalizes that to allow regular to mean, uh, no less than four days a week. So that something, uh, a facility can be considered a restaurant if it's open at least four days a week and allows people to order either off of a printed menu or a fixed menu. So in other words, this would be a little bit more flexible, a little bit more forgiving in terms of what kind of enterprises, what kinds of businesses could qualify as a restaurant in order to obtain a license. So, again, it's a policy question as to whether the council wishes to liberalize the city's liquor ordinance to allow this degree of flexibility.
Yeah, thank you. I think we want to encourage businesses into our community if possible, especially restaurants. I know we have very few of them. So this would give, uh, potential, um, businesses a little more flexibility, like Mr. Beatty had said. Any questions, comments?
Uh, the way you stated it, I believe, uh, that it is that they, uh, need to serve food four days or more. Currently, it's five. Does that mean that they are only open four days? Or they open six or seven days a week, but they only serve food four days out of the week, or is it irrelevant? It can be?
Well, it's, it's that they have to be open as a restaurant a minimum of four days a week. Certainly, they can exceed that, but to get, to get a license, they need to be a restaurant, and the question then becomes, well, what, what do you have to do to be a restaurant? And so we're simply setting, or this ordinance would set the bar at a minimum of four days per week serving food in order to qualify for a restaurant, in order to allow them to obtain a liquor license as a restaurant.
Is that clear?
Pretty common practice in the state of Minnesota. They're trying to outlaw the bar-only kind of situation.
So, in, you have to be serving food in order to get a liquor license? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, um, any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to adopt amendment to the city code, I'm sorry, adopt resolution number eighty-two dash fifteen. No. Um, proposed amendment change to the city code, chapter twelve, liquor. And it would be ordinance number four-twenty-seven, and it would be amendment to the city code. Going from five days to four days.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And the next one is, um, again, uh, title and summary. Um, a resolution authora- eighty-three dash fifteen, authorize publication of ordinance four-twenty-seven by title and summary.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So that concludes our public hearings this evening and other moving on to business items. First, we have our Dutch Lake Knoll second addition at sixteen thirty-five County Road one-ten north. This is Mr. Abel.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, there is a bit of history with this property. Uh, again, the address is sixteen thirty-five County Road one-ten north. The location map is on your screen. Um, located basically in the, uh, center of the city off of County Road one-ten. Um, the history with it, uh, being that back in two thousand and seven, the preliminary plat was approved for Dutch Lake Knoll with thirty-eight lots. Um, you can see, this is the, the preliminary plat that was approved back in, in two thousand and seven. What ultimately ended up happening, it was, it was broken off into phases. In two thousand and eight, phase one was approved with eleven lots. Um, stormwater, ponding, and infrastructure was put in as part of the development. Um, and outlot A was platted that, at that time for a future phase of the development. Um, and, uh, to, today, the applicant, um, has not come in for that phase two final plat approval. So ultimately, what happened was the preliminary plat, uh, expired because it did not receive an extension. Um, and what is being brought to you today is a resurrection of that previously approved plan. Uh, technically, we do have to run it through as a preliminary and final, uh, plat approval for review, but uh, to date, what has happened is Tradition Development has entered into an agreement to purchase the property and develop the property. What they've done is worked with the original engineer, Otto and Associates, in resurrecting those old plans, uh, bringing them up to, to current date, uh, and looking for city council approval on that. So here is the second addition, uh, twenty-seven lots, uh, again, as was approved in two thousand and seven. Uh, nothing is, uh, changing at all with the plat itself. Uh, it is consistent with what was previously approved. There is, there is one change, though, that, again, is not related to the plat, but to the, a street itself within the development. Um, and this has to do with the property to the south, uh, what was formerly called the Dirks property. Um, that property was part of our two thousand and six comp plan amendment agreement with the Met Council. There is a minimum unit number allocated towards it of thirty-one lots. Um, I'll just jump to the next slide here quick. Um, the previous plan, as you can see, uh, had, did show the, the right-of-way being platted right up to the property, and then a temporary cul-de-sac being constructed down there with the idea that, uh, the Dirks property, one, and if it ever were to develop, uh, you'd take the temporary cul-de-sac away, have a through-street come, and then that would be your secondary access point to the Dutch Lake Knoll subdivision. Well, uh, what happened in two thousand and eight is the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District did purchase that property. Uh, it was part of their land conservation program. Um, there's been a mixed, uh, message, I guess, if you will, since they've bought the property in terms of what they're going to use it for. But, um, more here recently with the resurrection of this, uh, development. Um, staff has asked the Watershed District what their intent is. Um, at a February board meeting, at, uh, the MCWD board, um, essentially decided that any type of development of this property, uh, to housing would conflict with their land conservation program. That was not the purpose of buying it. Um, so essentially, uh, we have on record that they do not intend on developing it. Uh, that being said, uh, working with the developer, we did not see the need to extend the street, Dutch Lake, uh, drive all the way, uh, to that property line at this time. So what, uh, you'll, you'll see on the right is what is being proposed. It'll be a, a corner intersection. Lot one will have a, a driveway, uh, off of the street, and so will lot two. Um, as I mentioned, the plat will not change, though, so we still will have platted right-of-way all the way to that pro- that southern, uh, property line in case, uh, the Watershed District does change their mind, uh, someday. We still have that platted right-of-way up to it if, if there's a need, uh, to extend the street, and we can look at that at that time. Um, so that will still be there and remain the same. Uh, it's just that the, the road will not be extended all the way down. We ended to, looked at a couple of different options here, um, in terms of this temporary turnaround. Was there a way to make that a, a permanent turnaround? Uh, could you do a hammerhead? Uh, looked at it from, you have down there, there is a stormwater pond, there's some wet, there's some wetland down there, there's some buffers. Um, we also approached the Watershed District about the idea of actually extending the cul-de-sac onto their property, um, and, and doing it that way. They, they did not look favorably to that. They thought there'd be, uh, significant tree loss and some grading that would need to be done to, to accomplish that. Um, so at the end of the day, um, really, the, the best option that we could come up with was, uh, eliminating that street, leaving the right-of-way as is, just in case something does happen in the future, and, and making it look as if, uh, this is the way the, the development was planned. Unfortunately, we can't go back. Um, if we would have known the Watershed District was going to buy the property, Dutch Lake Knoll probably would have looked completely different than it does now, but there already has been one phase approved. There's eleven lots. Uh, the stormwater infrastructure is there. Um, unfortunately, the, the way that it went, uh, i- is unfortunate, but it is what we're left with at this time. The Parks Commission and Planning Commission have reviewed the application. Uh, Park Commission's recommending cash in lieu for, uh, the park's dedication requirement. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. Uh, their recommendation is approval of the preliminary and final plat. Um, staff is also recommend- recommending approval of Dutch Lake Knoll second addition. It is consistent with our comprehensive plan. They are at the, the minimum, uh, density number. And again, this is consistent with what, what was approved back in two thousand and seven. Uh, the, and the final plat application is cons- uh, consistent with the terms and conditions of the preliminary plat approval. Um, so with that, I'll, uh, turn it back to council. Uh, Jacob Fick with Tradition's Development is in the audience. Uh, if you have any questions for him, and staff will also be available for questions.
Couple of questions, um, on their park dedication. Um, how much acreage or land would they have to give if that were taken in lieu of cash?
Uh, ten percent of the, um, ten percent of thirteen acres, it's around thirteen some acres. I don't have the exact number.
Okay. Thirteen point seven six, okay. And so, um, and staff is, and Park Commission is recommending, um, cash in lieu?
Correct.
And how much, ninety-four thousand?
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, can you go back to that plat again, where you're showing the, the right-of, yeah, that one, nope? Could that be a potential problem because if you ever wanted to vacate that right, I mean, that right-of-way, how would that work? And who, because now those two properties don't have, um, a certain width, because don't we have a certain width of requirement on a public road? And so now they don't have that, so how does that work?
Well, if it, if it were vacated, we, we would come up with a, any, well, it would depend on how we vacated and what, if it was going to be replatted. Um, there's different ways of doing it. We could do a variance at the same time if we were to ever vacate the right-of-way.
But they don't have access, I mean, with this plan, they wouldn't have direct access a certain width to a public road, or would they?
It's to the right-of-way they do. As, as I said, the plat's not changing. That's platted right-of-way. All the way, it, it's just not a public street within it.
Okay.
It doesn't say public street, it says public right-of-way.
Okay. Mr. Beatty, did you want to weigh in?
Well, no, I think David is correct. It's, it's, um, public right-of-way, it's simply not an open street. So I don't think currently there's any violation. I think you're right. If at some point it becomes clear that that little piece of right-of-way is no longer necessary, and the city receives a request to vacate, which you don't have to do, or some future council doesn't have to do, then that, uh, issue about a technical compliance with being on right-of-way would have to come up, and we'd have to consider that. But at least right now, regardless of whether the road is opened in front of them, they're, they are in compliance.
And then there's this little dotted line for, is that, I'm assuming the driveway access for the neighboring property?
Correct.
Is that the best alternative, do you think, or? It, it just seems odd.
Well, as, as I said, Madam Mayor and council, um, unfortunately, if you could go back in time, the plat would look completely different now, knowing that MCWD has purchased the property. Without changing the plat, um, it's better than a shared driveway.
Okay.
We, we try to, uh, avoid those at all costs
Right.
and, and times. Um, with, in working with the developer and city engineer, a number of different options were looked at, and yes, this is what staff recommends is the best solution.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, I just wanted to confirm, all of these, uh, homes will be going on city water, correct?
Correct.
So you're to assume, okay.
Um, just one more question regarding the trees. Uh, since we had a discussion about this before, um, I, I know that they're going to be removing a signif- I mean, like fifty-some percent. Is there? And I didn't see, I didn't see a tree, uh, removal plan in our packet. I, I didn't see it, so. Can you show us? Because I know there's some pretty huge, significant trees on this property. Are those going to be removed?
I think it's page two-twenty in our packets. Item twelve, the applicant shall develop a tree removal and replacement plan acceptable to the city prior to the time of the application for final plat. Plan must minimize removal of trees from the property, replace as many trees as reasonable on the property or such other locations as may be approved by the city.
Uh, page two-oh-one of your packet is the, uh, it starts on two-hundred is the tree, uh, inventory, and then the, the list of s- significant trees. So, so one-ninety-nine, I'm sorry, uh, one-ninety-nine is where it starts, and then goes down to page, uh, two-oh-one, and then followed up by then the landscape plan, uh, two-oh-three. They are, uh, what I'll note is, when this was originally approved in two thousand and seven, we had a different tree preservation ordinance requirement. Um, at that time, you had to replace for every inch you took out above the, the thirty percent allowance, you had to put a half inch back. Um, today, if for every inch you take out, you put an inch back. So we are more restrictive now than we once were when this was originally approved. Developer was made aware of that, um, so they did, um, up the, the tree, uh, replacement than what was originally approved back in two thousand and seven to comply with our current ordinances. So they are complying. They did upsize, uh, a number of the trees, added some trees in some locations to meet the current code requirement.
Hey?
One question on that, uh, stub street, that easement. I know, uh, MCWD keeps telling us that they're going to do their improvements to these properties, and they're going to put them back on the market, but it hasn't happened yet. But what happens if it does? Who pays to recon- basically, put that street in, that stub street?
We'd make the, whoever's, well, if, if it's MCWD or whoever's developing, um, that property, we'd, the onus would be on them.
They would have to go for that corner?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So what you are looking for is approval of the preliminary plat, and then also approval of the final plat?
Correct.
And, um, and then the approval of the subdivision agreement?
Correct. I can, uh, if you want me to touch base on that, um, Madam Mayor, members of council, as we do with, um, all, all of our subdivisions, we enter into a subdivision agreement with the developer, which sets forth the obligations um, of the developer for, uh, public improvements. Uh, grading and landscaping, uh, are all called out as part of that agreement. Um, so staff is recommending approval of entering into a subdivision agreement. So there are, there are three, um, items or resolutions we're looking for approval on council this evening.
Okay. Any other questions?
I mean, my bigger, my, one of my concerns is I don't want this to end up where they go in and just remove all these trees, and it ends up looking like Red Oak or Orchard Cove. And that was the neighborhood, um, the neighbors and these, both of those developments were, um, very much opposed to those, that amount of tree removal. Just my comments.
Is there some way to avoid that?
Well, that would be my question to the developer, I guess.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jacob Fick with, uh, Tradition Development and Robert Thomas Homes. Um, we're excited for you tonight. Obviously, the tree issue does come up, uh, a lot. Uh, majority of these trees do sit around the glue so home, unfortunately, uh, which is on top of the high point on the site. Those trees, we're going to save as many as we can, including by trying to install retaining walls and so forth in some of the rear yards. Um, but as you can see, a lot of those sit in the cul-de-sac, sit right around the front side of the homes, and, and, uh, we will save as much as we possibly can. It's, it's to our benefit as well with, with the road back there. Uh, there's not a lot of backyards, so you're adding the amenity as, as the natural trees and trying to buffer them as much as we possibly can. But I'm not going to lie, I mean, there are going to be tree, there's going to be tree removal, and the numbers kind of show what it is. and the numbers kind of show what it is. But in the same respect, we're trying to replace as big a stock as we possibly can, and buffer that so it doesn't look... It's to our advantage to keep every tree out there we possibly can. But realistically, we also have to come before you and explain that there's only so many trees we can save. And to put a house pad in there by the time these guys build a house and they drive on the roots, it becomes compacted, and it's far better off. And I think in everyone's situation, to remove those trees, we think we can realistically keep and keep them versus coming in and saying, well, we can keep these, and then a year or two later, they die. And people that are happy about it are, well, I don't know if anyone would be. Because the residents will complain to you, and they'll complain to us about it. That whole piece goes from top to bottom.
Yep, I understand. Okay. Any other questions of the developer? I just have one, if you maybe, I don't know if you have thought of this or not, but as you enter the Sunnybrook development, on the, so it's Sunnybrook Drive, on the right, there's a very nice monument and waterfalls and all of that. Do you have any plans to sort of mirror or match that? I know that that's a stormwater pond, so I'm not sure how that plays into it, but it seems to me like there should be something more decorative on your side.
We actually will, this is called Dutch Lake Knoll, but we are actually part of the Sunnybrook Association.
Okay.
So we have, we have worked with the city attorney and drafting amendments to open, or to bring us in. We've met with the Sunnybrook neighborhood. We had to get approved as a builder first off, before you even see this thing move forward. We've been approved as a builder in there. That has a number of restrictions that we have to do and build to, I mean, architecturally wise and price point wise. We have had brief discussions, and that's probably to the extent of how we embellish an entrance monument, or how we embellish the entrance into Sunnybrook from that standpoint. It is beautiful right there. The thing that stands out right now is a big advertising sign, someone trying to sell land. That is not our intent, obviously. What happens there, I don't know yet. But our intent is to try to embellish at least as much as we can, because we're going to try to sell homes here that are going to have to be at a bare minimum five hundred thousand dollars. So we have to create an enclave there for us and as, and our builder, as we try to sell homes. And what that is, I don't know, I mean, I can't tell you today. But you're right, the beautiful waterfall, there was a sign there, actually before, when we said, look in this property, there was a monument sign for Sunnybrook, and which point now has been replaced for re-letter sign, I believe, of some sort. But as we work towards that, we do have landscaping numbers in here to try to up, I will say, the beauty of coming into this neighborhood. There are beautiful homes out there right now as it sticks, but you know, as we have a marketing window that we need to hit, that's how we need to get folks, unfortunately, past, we don't have it right off of the county road there. We have to come in through this existing neighborhood a little bit, and make sure that we can draw our buyers in there to sell it comfortably well.
Madam Mayor, just to be clear, this developer does not own the property on Sunnybrook Circle as you come in. The original eleven lots that were planted in Phase One, two were developed independently, and nine were never developed, and they have been purchased by another developer. These folks before you tonight for Phase Two really are only purchasing the outlot, which is the twenty-seven lots, so...
Right. So in other words, they don't own?
They don't own, they don't own that, they don't own, yes, they don't own any of that tier of those six lots. That was part of the first addition.
Okay.
And then the five lots over here. Another developer picked up the nine unbuilt lots. And so, the lot that you're talking about, which would be the logical location for an entry sign, is not owned by the developer.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
We're working through with the existing association.
Okay.
As you guys have probably known, there's a little bit of quote-unquote hair on this deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Over the years, as we try to figure this out. But it's, we're excited to be here and get something going, obviously, and think we'll do well here in Menetrista. But as you mentioned about that entrance point, that is a feature for us that we have to work with the existing association, because we don't own the land.
Okay.
But they seem to have interest as well, so...
Madam Mayor and council, there was, there was supposed to be improvements done there as part of the original landscape plan, it did call for that. We actually still are holding a letter of credit on that first phase for some landscaping that didn't get done yet. So there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen in this whole situation, so...
All right. We just want nice developments, as you do too, I'm sure, so...
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Counsel, what is your pleasure? I'm looking for approval for the preliminary plat. It's resolution number eighty-nine dash fifteen. We could do them together, because we're also looking for resolution number ninety dash fifteen, approval for the final plat. And then resolution number ninety-one dash fifteen, approve the subdivision agreement. Those are the three, we could do them all together.
So...
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve resolutions eighty-nine fifteen, ninety fifteen, and ninety-one dash fifteen. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. And next, we'll move on to our approval of, approve of proposal for geotechnical services for our water system improvement project. Staff?
I'm going to let Mr. Hornby handle this one. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. With the water system improvements in the RFP, and also identified by all the proposals received, and as typical of most projects nowadays, is that the geotechnical contract is usually directly with the city for these projects. So you're in the design phase, you're going to have your preliminary design, and for that work, you're going to have a geotechnical investigation upfront. The geotechnical engineer is going to make recommendations for your foundations, for your buildings, piping, materials that are going to be used on the site, requirements for excavation, so forth. So, working with SEH, they have kind of a unique group that does this work. They have geotechnical engineers within their company. What they do is get proposals from other geotechnical engineers to provide the field work for them. So they do the borings in the field. But their engineers observe the borings, and also do the geotechnical investigation, analysis, and report, and then wind that right into design. So what it does is, it becomes a quick, efficient way that gives them the opportunity to control their schedule on getting these improvements completed. SEH did request proposals from three other geotechnicals to do the field work, AET, Braun, and Element. And in their, SEH is recommending that Braun be the drilling company that they would use. They're a little bit higher in their price, but their schedule works out much more favorably. The cost that SEH has provided does a couple of things. It provides the maximum potential costs provided from the subconsultants. What they, they may have some additional costs, they have to do additional depth in their borings, and so that costs more, so they provide the maximum amount that that would entail. SEH has also proposed to reduce their fees associated with the coordination effort they would have that was in the original proposal. So there's about fifteen thousand dollars in reduction from their fees, as long as they're doing this work. The total fee proposed for SEH and Braun Intertec is eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. That's the maximum potential cost. And staff recommends approval to resolution for geotechnical services, approving the geotechnical services proposal with SEH, in that amount, eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Okay, anything else? Any questions by council?
No question, but just a comment. I think it, the information stated that they'll be doing borings out to check for the Hunter's Crest Water Tower, correct?
Correct. That's included, it includes the North Water Treatment Plant, the South Water Treatment Plant, the water main connecting the Central and South Systems and the Water Tower. And what they've done in their proposal is separated each one out, knowing they're probably going to have different mobilization times in order to do that work, because they're all going to work in different phases. So they've broken that out in their proposal.
We don't have a location for the Water Tower yet.
Correct.
So that would have to be done separately.
However, in the, in the information, they, where they were going to be testing is near County Road ninety-two and Hunter's Trail, is what it said.
That's a site that we've identified that there may be an interest in, but there's more than one site. So we have to define that and work with landowners.
Okay. I did drive past that location today, because I was very curious. I knew that there's concern on the Hunter's Crest residents, you know, they don't, they want water, but they don't want the Water Tower in their yard. And so, it seemed to me to be, I mean, I don't know how the soil testing is going to turn out, but it sure seemed like a good location. It seemed as though it was about as far away from any of the homes or the, you know, there were a couple of homes there, but I don't know how far in you had to go in on Hunter's Trail. It just said near ninety-two and Hunter's Trail, so...
It's a little further west. It's actually right on, near the LRT, LRT trail in that area, right at the end of our trunk water main. There's also an area that we're looking at more on the north side, along Highway Seven. So, you know, there's a balance of things to look at for the city, and part of what we're looking at on these sites is the balance between the height of the tower and its performance. And part of that will be determined on the distribution system modeling that SEH is doing upfront here on the preliminary design. So that'll give us some more information, that'll be able to judge better where the better location would be, you know, both from price and then some of those aesthetic things as well.
Any questions? I know Mr. Jensen is here from SEH tonight, if you have specific questions of them. Okay? Yeah, the tower is kind of separate, because that can be done at a later date if you will, but the location will be determined, well, I'm not sure, maybe what timeframe are we looking at, maybe?
Well, we're going to keep this one moving as best we can. You know, there are some, it could go later, it could come sooner. It just depends on whether or not we can, we have the land.
Right.
And then, we will have to look at the seasons and when construction starts, when it's completed.
Right.
SEH has done a very good job of laying out the fact that if you get it so far, you might not be able to get it painted if it's not warm enough. So then you would end up waiting over the winter season to come through and paint it. So you might, it could be, ideally, it would be completed in twenty sixteen, as long as everything goes slowly. But that is one item in the system that could be pushed out if we needed to.
Right, and that wouldn't affect the water treatment facilities at all, so...
No, what it would do is, it'd have to, either, we'd work it out, so it'd have to work out in the distribution system, and then we select, when we get that site selected, we'll move forward with that tank, so...
Okay, okay.
Well, I think that at some point, we'll be having a more lengthy discussion on the timing of that, I'm guessing, but...
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So I might be premature in saying, but I think that it's been a very emotional topic for our city, and I think that the sooner that we could get most or all of it behind us and moving forward would be to our benefit, so...
And the one reason you may recall that that tank was proposed out in that area is to provide fire protection and storage for that area, because you've got two and a half miles of water main that will not provide that fire flow in the long term. So you need to have some additional storage out there. This is that opportunity to do that with this project. I've stated that a number of times, but that's the reality of it.
Right, okay. Good questions, anything else? Otherwise, I'm looking for approval of proposal for the geotechnical services for water system improvement project. It's resolution number eighty dash fifteen.
So moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions? Comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we move on to the, it's on number six C, resolution number eighty-six dash fifteen. This is a proven agreement for the right of entry with Independent School District number two seventy-seven, and this is for our North Water Treatment Facility. I believe that's Mr. Beatty?
Yes. Madam Mayor and council, as we've discussed on a couple of occasions, the city has identified the property immediately adjacent to its existing wellhouse in the southwest corner of the school district's property as a desirable location for the North Treatment Plant. In order to determine whether that site is appropriate, or which portion of that site's appropriate, it's necessary to gain access to the property, do some surveying, do some soil testing and so forth. It's a pretty standard agreement. The way you do that is through what's called a right of entry agreement. That's what's before you tonight. It simply is permission from the school district to allow the city to go on and do the poking and prodding that's necessary to figure out whether the property is appropriate. One of the attachments in the packet is a map of that area that shows you generally the box, or in this case, three boxes where that work is going to be done, which is the area that the city is going to go on. You notice the boxes are non-contiguous. I think the two ones that are closer to the street, which are sort of centered on where some of the soil borings are going to be, the equipment will gain access, I'm assuming, from the street. The other one, the idea is that access will be gained sort of from the side, from the west, over the existing city's property. The intent is to minimize the amount of land that we need to go on and minimize the testing and investigation that's necessary in order to do the due diligence that we want. And so, this item is on your agenda tonight. It's simultaneously on the agenda of the school district in hopes that both bodies will approve it, and that the city can then quickly get its contractor in there to do the necessary work.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. I actually have a question for Mr. Jensen. Why, why is it necessary to do soil borings down by the road, by the street? Those two smaller little boxes, when the building is presumably, possibly being built within that larger green box?
So, Madam Mayor, the two smaller ones there, the ones to the south, those are just for utilities.
Okay, okay.
So they're not as deep?
Yes, okay, thank you. So, right of entry agreement. Any questions? We do need this in order to perform the soil borings. So I'm looking for an approval to approve the agreement for the right of entry with Independent School District two seventy-seven.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Any questions, further discussion? And hopefully, they'll approve, prove it on their end tonight, and we can move forward with that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, motion passes. And then we have resolution eighty-one dash fifteen, and this is approve the purchase agreement with Independent School District two seventy-seven. This is for the land acquisition that we will need for the North Water Treatment Plant site. Staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, before you tonight is the purchase agreement for the piece of property adjacent to the portion that we already own it. I believe it's point five nine acres. We worked with SEH and our engineer to determine the amount of land that would be needed. We used the appraisal provided by Ms. Lindstrom that was approved back in early May, and came up with a price for the entire acreage and selected, it's basically a math, math problem, taking that dollar amount, nine point five nine acres, to determine that dollar amount of thirty-six thousand, seven, twenty-seven, fifty cents. I did, I did hear some comments as we were going through this about, you know, it's maybe not the most desirable piece of property of the entire amount there. So, the only comment I'll make about that is that that may be true, but we are obviously in need of that piece of property. One man's treasure might be another man's trash, or two thousand for the appraisal done by Ms. Lindstrom. So, all things being equal, I think this is a fair price. The school district was fine with this amount of money. They're more than willing to want to work with us to make this a reality. So unless you have any questions, look forward to having you approve that motion.
I would like to go on record with a couple of comments, and what Mr. Brony was referring to earlier was our lengthy conversation we had this morning regarding this. First of all, I'm very familiar and understand how the appraisal was done. of all, I'm very familiar and understand how the appraisal was done. Taking the total amount of the land that is owned by Independent District two seventy-seven, and coming up with an average price of sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. I also understand that we do not need an acre, and we only need five point nine, or which arriving at it. But the bottom line is, it's still based on sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars an acre. I do not, in any way, want to do anything or see us do anything that would slow down this project or delay it. I think it's important that we work with the school. We continue and try to build a relationship with the school, so I'm not looking to do anything that would slow down the project, because this is something, as we think we will all agree, should have been dealt with years ago, the quality of our water. However, I'm having a hard time with going with sixty-two thousand five hundred an acre. As I said with Mike earlier today, if I was going to go buy a new car, and I went to the Chevrolet dealer, and they had a Corvette and a Tahoe and a bunch of other vehicles, and on the low end they had a Spark and a Sonic. If I took the average of all those ten vehicles that are on the lot, I'd have an average price of twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'd rather, obviously, rather pay twenty-seven thousand dollars for a Tahoe or a Corvette than I will for a twelve thousand dollar Spark or a fourteen thousand dollar Sonic. And that's where I'm getting to this thing, and that's why I'm having a hard time with. We're getting, we need it. We don't want to slow anything down. It's important. But we're paying an average price of land that is probably the worst property within the whole school, Independent District two seventy-seven. So I'm just going on record as saying, hey, we need to go. I don't want to slow anything down, but I think we're probably paying ten to twelve thousand dollars more than we should.
Well, I think if you were to take the average, and even if you went on the low end, which is the fifty-four thousand, I believe she said was, so they ranged, I believe it was fifty-four thousand all the way up to sixty-nine thousand, sixty-eight, sixty-nine thousand. So the average was sixty-four.
Sixty-two, two fifty.
Yep. So, what we're, what we're looking at here is, if you go with that, and even if you took the low end and said, okay, this isn't great land, you know, we're probably talking a few thousand less. So the question is, do we take the chance of stopping and holding up this, this project? And it's critical because the school district board really only meets one more time this year. So, that's the critical thing. It's a timing issue. And do we pay a premium? I don't think so. I think we're paying a fair price. We're not overpaying, we're not underpaying. Could we get it for a little bit less? Do we want to take the chance of holding up this entire project on the basis of maybe two or three thousand dollars? I don't, I don't agree with you. I mean, respectfully.
That's why I wanted to put on record, I don't want to do anything or see us do anything that would slow this down.
Right.
That's why I wanted to go on record of that. And then the importance of working with the school.
And that's exactly. They seemingly thus far seem to be very willing to sell it for the thirty-six thousand. And we also have to be aware of the fact that we're buying it from another taxing entity, so we want to pay them fairly, because those are tax dollars as well. You know what I'm saying? We're a government agency buying land from another government agency, so we don't want to shortchange them, because those are tax dollars that their residents have paid. So we just want to make it fair, and staff has looked at this and said this would be fair. And I understand where you're coming from, but, and we certainly don't want to.
We had this conversation this morning, and like I told Mike this morning, I certainly don't want to do anything to slow anything down, or that would jeopardize anything.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise?
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry.
You know, if I could offer a perspective, because I understand the issues, and certainly staff has discussed it. You know, the appraisal report, as several people have mentioned, have talked about an average value of the property. Well, you know, I don't know where that piece is necessarily. It depends on who you are. From the school district's perspective, this may be one of the worst pieces of property. From the average Joe's perspective, it may also be one of the worst pieces of property. From the city's perspective, it is the most valuable piece of property, because that's where we want to be. And so, you know, I just think you have to keep that in mind when you kind of look at the value. I think we're, we should be grateful that we're, the school district's willing to let us buy it for the average value.
Yeah, they could have, knowing our desire to get this piece of property, could have asked us to pay a premium for it. They could have, but they didn't, so.
I think it's good.
I understand what Councilmember Christians is saying. If we applied that to, you know, any of our homes or that sort of thing, you know, one piece of land is not equally valuable to another piece of land. But then also, to what Mr. Beatty was saying, that's, you know, it's, it's the land that we need, that we want. Also, I'm aware that about a year ago, the thought was that it might be fifty-one thousand that was gonna have to be paid, so coming in at thirty-six or seven, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, to keep things moving forward, so.
Okay. Thank you for, for your comments, and I understand. So, are we in agreement, then? Do I have a motion to approve the purchase agreement with Independent School District number two seventy-seven for acquisition of land for the north water treatment plant site? I believe the amount would be thirty-six, seven, twenty-seven, fifty cents? Fifty cents?
Fifty cents.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further comments, discussion, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so that concludes our water treatment issues, our agenda items for tonight, and we'll move on to change to chapter eleven, our Public Safety, section eleven twenty-five, for Weapons of the City Code and Adopt a Revised Hunting Map. I know we've had discussions on this in work sessions, and this is kind of a culmination of that. Mr. Chief Falls?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As the mayor mentioned, we've had numerous discussions regarding this matter, and so, what I'm gonna do is just summarize this for you. This is on page three hundred of your packets. It begins there. Certainly, if you have questions as we go along, feel free to ask. With that said, with the recent development of the Woodland Cove area, there's certainly a need to update our hunting zone map, or hunting zone, rather. That area would include the hunting, or the Woodland Cove development, some of the Three Rivers Park District property, as well as the property at the forty-one hundred Kings Point Road. So by adopting ordinance four twenty-nine, amending the Mini Trista City Code, that'll essentially do a number of things, which I'll kind of outline for you. It will rezone that area to, from a bow hunting only zone to a no hunting zone. It will also address, well, let me back up. Through the, through the process of this rezoning the hunting area, there's a number of areas or items identified in the city code that, that needed to be addressed or updated, if you will, and I'll just summarize those for you. So in addition to updating, updating or amending the hunting zones, some of the other items that came up, that needed to be addressed, was adding language to the city code that would address the discharge of a bow and arrow for purposes other than hunting. So that has been addressed. Also, adding a provision for allowing hunting for the purpose of managing wildlife populations. You'll see that in there. As well as adding a provision for essentially a waiver process for the purpose of target practicing with a bow and arrow. So with that, in addition to that, there were a number of essentially minor housekeeping items as well. As we went through that ordinance, there were a number of things that were outdated and just needed to either be removed or updated. So, those were all addressed as part of this process as well. So, without going into great detail, I'll certainly stand for any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I guess this particular action item is adopting ordinance four twenty-nine to amend the Mini Trista City Code by amending section eleven twenty-five regarding weapons.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know we've had several discussions at work sessions regarding the hunting map, and, and some issues regarding bow hunting, and, not bow hunting, but target practice. I think this addresses that as well as we can, within the limits, you know, safety limits. So, I think that would address those. Comments? Otherwise, I would like to thank Chief Falls for doing this, and trying to take our residents into consideration, their safety, but also trying to take the considerations of those that, that like to target practice into consideration as well. So, I think this is a good, a good ordinance amendment. So, okay.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to adopt amendment, ordinance number four twenty-nine, chapter, section eleven twenty-five. It misses from our chapter eleven Public Safety, section eleven twenty-five. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Along with this, now, we also have to approve the revised hunting map.
Correct.
And that's, that was in your packet. It was just up there on the screen. Just a small, kind of basically, the hunters, Woodland Cove area has been revised to no hunting now. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the revised hunting map as presented this evening. Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. And next we have, we have to authorize the publication of ordinance four twenty-nine by title and summary.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a resolution approving professional service agreement for our twenty-fifteen mill and overlay improvement project. Believe that would be Mr. Hornby as well?
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you recall in our last meeting, we discussed the mill and overlay project. We looked at Bayside Lane as one that would fit well with the improvements that Public Works has done over the last season, to make some improvements to curb and gutter, and some of the storm sewer. He's a good candidate for that. The pavement management plan has a project cost of about a hundred and four thousand dollars for that roadway. WSB has prepared a professional services agreement and a letter proposal to complete that work. This would include design and construction observation through project closeout, and that is an hourly, not to exceed, proposal in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars. And there's a resolution for your consideration and approval in the packet.
And does that, are the design, are the engineering services included in the hundred and three thousand?
Yes, that includes design and bidding and construction.
And oversight, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I know this is part of the road improvement plan. Will the residents be notified?
Yes, they will be. And closer to, you know, construction, unless you want us to notify them that their project is going to move forward, you know, during the design phase, we could certainly do that.
What's the timeframe?
We'd like to have this bid in July, perhaps, and then construction in August and September.
Okay. Maybe in July you might want to notify the neighborhood?
Correct. I think when we have plans done, we could do it that way.
Okay.
One thing I do want to mention, I think in our work session discussion on the road topic, there was a comment made that, that council didn't see all the road ratings. So with the mill and overlay, I did include that. I color quoted all of them that fall into the mill and overlay section in light blue, just in the, in the column for the street name. But the ones that we are looking at doing, those, that segment is highlighted all the way across the page for your ease of viewing.
Okay, so we only have one street that we're doing this year?
Correct. With the budgeted amount we have, that's, that one fell into that budget.
Okay.
So what we tried to do with the pavement management plan this, we have about two hundred and forty thousand dollars for budgets. We tried to fit in the mill and overlay, and then also crack fill and seal coat.
Right, right. Okay. With, oh, I'm sorry. With these other highlighted ones, how long do you think it's gonna take to get all of those done? Is that like a five, six year? There's quite a few on there.
Yes, it's probably gonna take longer than that.
Like ten years?
And that was one of the reasons to get the, and with, working with the road commission and getting that, and the council, to increase the budget for that, so that, you know, you can at least, at the very least, your streets are in good condition, keep them in good condition. We can work on methods to get the streets that are in worse condition done as time goes on, so.
And so, Mr. Hornby, to clarify, you said approximately two hundred and forty thousand in the budget. Is that, does that include the additional one hundred thousand, or is it two forty plus?
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's inclusive, yes.
Without the, without the additional one hundred thousand, it would have been around one forty?
Correct. And then so next year, it'll be about three hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Roads Committee that existed before, and councilmember Christians and Vanderlinde, from being on the council for two thousand and fourteen, and pushing through on that and improving that additional one hundred thousand dollars a year. Our city, as I think we all recognize, clearly is in need of maintaining and improving our roads. So, I, being in the position that I am now, I'm glad that we have that, at least that additional one hundred thousand dollars that will be totaling approximately nine hundred thousand dollars over the next nine years. So, thank you.
Okay. So is there a motion to, I need a motion, I should say, to approve. Do you want to do the crack sealing and the mill overlay altogether?
We could do the crack sealing as a separate motion.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the, it would be a resolution number eighty-seven dash fifteen, approving professional service agreement for the twenty-fifteen mill and overlay improvement project, city project number zero four dash fifteen.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item is for the crack fill and seal, crack sealing and seal coat project. Excuse me. This one, we did take a look at several roadways, and I think in our discussion, we found that, or discussed whether or not these new subdivisions, and Palmer Point being one of them, having an escrow to take care of that initial seal coat, and they do, there's about twenty thousand dollars set aside for that subdivision. So, we did add some additional roadways to try to make up that twenty thousand dollars. And so we added two more roadways. We added North Home Drive and Turtle Road. North, at least Turtle Road north of Eagle Nest Drive, and those fall in with the rating category we're looking for in our pavement management plan. So the estimated, the budgetary amount that we set up from pavement management plan, that inventory for those improvements, including those additional roadways, is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. But keeping in mind, there's twenty thousand dollars of that that will be funded through the escrow account for Palmer Point. So, we're basing the crack fill and seal coat project on that basis. WSB has provided a proposal for our services. That proposal is in the amount of, excuse me, I need to go back and look, sixty-five hundred dollars. That is for preparation plans and specs bidding and construction services. So that does provide a construction inspector on the job when that work is being done. This also is a project that we're working with on, with four other communities now.
I saw that, yeah.
What we do is we, we put this together on an hourly basis. We don't exceed the sixty-five hundred for that work.
But you're also hoping to get better bids, then, I'm assuming, because you're working on it from four.
Correct. That's part of the beauty of doing that. We set up a separate schedule for each community. Each city may have a different schedule, so there might be more mobilizations, but contractors can set their schedule for their construction season based on the bids for your schedule.
Right. Okay. All right. So on the crack sealing and seal coat, when a new development
goes in, so now we've got Dutch Lake Knoll, that's gonna be coming up in the queue. Assuming that goes in the summer, they do the blacktop. Do they, that following summer, let's say it's two thousand sixteen, do they have one, in that year, do they do some follow-up application that's at their cost?
What they do is they put it, they build the roadways up to the base course, and then we wait until a large percentage of the homes are constructed. Then we have them come in and do repairs to the curb and gutter, to the pavement. If there's any areas that are broken up, they have to come in and replace those, repair that, and then we'll allow them to put the wearing course on. Then approximately-
Is that two inch?
That's about an inch and a half. That's about an inch and a half.
Okay.
So, they'll have about two and a half inches of pavement down first, and they'll come back with a final lift of the two minutes when the majority of the homes are constructed. About three years later, we'll come back and seal coat that, and they put up an escrow for that seal coat. And if there are any cracks in the pavement, I'll have them crack, do the crack fill as well, we'll use those dollars for that, we've included that in the estimate. One of the other things that we've, in the plan review, is we've modified the pavement requirement for the city to go to a different oil, which is a C oil. C oil resists rutting and resists cracking, you get about half the cracking or less cracking, much less cracking than you would on a B oil, which you typically had in the city, so it costs a little bit more to put it down, it's much better performing pavement, especially on the low-volume roadways, so it'll perform very well for you, and it'll also save in the long run on your crack filling.
So, with what you just explained, it would probably be three years out before they would come onto our pavement management plan?
Probably more like four or five even.
Probably four to five years, depending on how quickly they build. If they came in and built them all in the first year, well, then we'll be in there in about three years doing the crack fill. There has been a tendency in MINDOT recommendations to try to get that first seal coat on within the first three years. I think most cities are actually targeting the first five, just from a matter of budgeting, but as soon as we're ready, you know, a couple of years after we've got that workhorse on, we'll...
Well, especially if it's a development and we have the, we have it in our funds, I mean...
Exactly, yes.
Then, there would be no reason not to.
Correct.
Okay, good, good questions. Anything else? Otherwise, I'm looking to approve resolution number 88-15, which approves professional service agreement for 2015 crack sealing and seal coat improvement project for the city.
I just want to make a comment. I think staff needs to be recognized in this, I mean, it's been a long time coming to finally get to where we're maintaining our roads and taking care of it and putting some money back into them, and like I say, my hat's off to staff, they've spent a lot of time getting to where we are today, and I think residents appreciate it, and I know I do.
Kudos, thank you. So, was that a motion, Mr. Vanderlinde?
Sure.
Okay, I thought I heard that somewhere in there. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for resolution number 88-15. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yep, thank you. Next, we have our, accept our resignation from David Lang as a representative from the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District. His letter was in your packet, as you know, he's sold his home and he will be moving, so his last, he's anticipating his last day, if you will, to be the end of June. Now, I did receive an email from him today, and he was saying that they're starting, they're going to be starting their process, it's a strategic planning process in June, and he was wondering if we wanted to replace him a little sooner so that that individual could be a part of that process. And, we could, but I'm not sure that we're going to have somebody on board that quickly, and that was part of the discussion, I think, that tonight is who we're going to appoint and what the process might be. Mr. Broney, maybe you could chime in here as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Generally, when we have a vacancy like this, we'll do some advertising in the newspaper, on our website, et cetera, to solicit, to see if there are people that would be willing to step forward and serve, in this case, on the LMCD. The other thing we could do is, if a council member would like to serve on this, I know you're quite busy with all the other things you have, but if somebody on the council would like to serve, we could always go that route as well, but it's your pleasure as to what you would like to do to fill this back.
So, if anybody on the council would like to serve as the representative, we wouldn't have to go through the interview and advertising process, as Mr. Broney said, I know we're all busy, but is there anybody interested? Otherwise, I know that there's at least one individual that has stated a desire, and I'm not sure if he, I thought he has a resume on file. Okay, so I know we have one person already, but typically, as Mr. Broney said, we open it up for, to accept applications, review them if we receive multiple ones, and then make our decision based on that. With that, if we do that, is it possible to get, to make the deadline so we can interview people at our June, I think it's June 1st, isn't it?
I think that would be pretty tough to do.
Would be too close.
I think the best, your best bet would maybe be the second meeting in June.
Okay, okay, all right.
I mean, if I jump an ad tomorrow, it's not going to run till Friday, usually have a couple, week or two to apply.
Okay. So, are you on board with that? We put out an ad, put it on our website as well, maybe even send an email to, if we have an email list, whatever?
If we have such, we'll do it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then you'll bring it back, the second meeting in June?
Yes, we'll try for the second meeting.
All right, sounds good. And, yes, we want to thank Mr. Lang for his time and service to the city, and do we want to invite him here?
We certainly can.
I can ask if, I'll send him an email or give him a call to see if he has, has the time, I know he's busy with moving and selling and all of that. Okay, so we'll move on to our reports, do we want to do staff reports first?
If that's what you'd like to do.
Sure, why not, yep.
Madam Mayor, do you want to make a motion to accept the resignation and authorize staff to advertise to fill for the vacancy?
Yes, yeah, we probably should, all right, thank you. Do I have a motion to accept David Lang's resignation from the LMCD as a representative and to authorize staff to advertise for the vacancy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Okay, so we'll do staff reports first.
Kind of staring at the clock, Mayor, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to squeeze in not only these, this information, but I guess we're going to find out.
Shall we just take, you know what, then let's take a two-minute break and then come back and finish up, because the report shouldn't take too long, but...
I don't believe so, but I think we're going to, I don't know if it'll be quite two minutes, but I think five minutes might be more appropriate, we'll just let Isaac kind of do his thing, and as soon as he's ready to go, we'll go.
Okay. All right, we are all back and ready to finish up here, well, except for missing Mr. Abel. Is he coming, or?
Yes, yes he is.
Okay.
But we can go ahead.
We can go ahead, all right, Mr. Broney?
Sure, I don't know if any other staff has any announcements, I have a few, so I'll go through mine, and if I get to the end, they have a few, we'll let them chime in. Couple of updates that are from Mr. Grimm, who is not here tonight. The utility payment billing feature, they do plan on rolling that out sometime in June, we will obviously notify council and then try to do some press releases and the like in order to publicize that aspect, when that does happen, but they're still working on it, but they still hope to have that roll out sometime in June. The PFA loan item, questions about that at some point in time in the past, but they'll be sending in the IUP, which is the Intended Use Plan, to the Minnesota PFA by the deadline, which is the first week in June, so we're still tracking on that, and SEH has been working with Brian on that.
And the funds should be available this fall yet?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so, right in time for the start of our construction?
That is correct. I don't know if you're going to...
Which I think is exciting.
It's very exciting. I don't know if you were going to mention this or not, Mayor, but I'll steal your thunder.
Okay.
The second quarter Mayor-Council Staff Forum is scheduled for this Wednesday at 9:00 AM here at the council chambers for Mayor Whalen and Councilmember Mortensen to meet with our city staff and listen and speak with them. Want to spend a second or two, maybe Mr. Falls or will chime in, but I would like to thank our city staff for, actually, a couple of events that we've had in the last two weeks. Back on May 9th, we had the recycling cleanup day that we jointly do with the city amount, that was a huge success, I think we had some very long lines here, people lining up to drop off their stuff, and then, just this past Saturday, the May 16th, we had Trista Day, I don't know if Paul, if you want to send along a few thanks here?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Broney. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, this year, the weather held out, it wasn't looking too promising first thing in the morning, but it did hold out, and so we had an excellent attendance, I don't have official numbers for you yet, but I'm guessing somewhere between 1,100 and 1,300 or 1,400 people, based on some items that we purchased, so we'll certainly narrow that down as time goes on.
Like hot dogs?
Yes, it's a very unofficial tally, so...
That's an unofficial account.
So, if someone ate more than one, you know, it might throw it off a little bit, but it was, it was well attended, which was good to see, so. But with that, I'd just like to thank, first of all, the people that came, certainly, our citizens are aware that we hold this on an annual basis, and I think it's, I have heard a number of positive comments regarding Trista Day, so that's always good to hear, and I think, with that said, we'll be holding a meeting here probably in the next couple of weeks, just to kind of discuss how things went, maybe some things that we can add or change as time goes on, and so I'll certainly push that date out as, once we have a date in mind here for that purpose. And I'd also like to thank staff, because quite frankly, Trista Day is, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, a lot of prep work, and it takes, it's a very time-consuming job, there's a lot of phone calls and commitments made on behalf of staff, and so certainly city staff and specifically Public Works Police, and then I'd like to, I guess, a special thank you to Amy Langenfeld, one of our police secretaries, and Brad Carlson, that's really, it's assigned to them, so they're really the two that do all the phone calls, make all the arrangements, and then make all the confirmations right up until Trista Day, so thank you to them, and also Mayor and council that attended, that was nice as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Couple other items, I did attend the Minnesota City County Management Association Spring Conference in Nisswa this past week, Wednesday through Friday, that was a very good conference. Couple other things to touch on, we discussed roads a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things we hoped to do was to have a neighborhood meeting for the folks that live on Enchanted Lane, right now, we're tentatively targeting that for Tuesday, June 9th, and we'll be probably finalizing those plans in the next day or so. If there are enough council members that are interested in attending that, please let us know, so if we do have to notice the meeting, we can do so, but if there is not a quorum, then we won't, but we'll try to pin that date down and notify all those residents, obviously, we'll probably hold it here at, not this building, but next door, in the public safety facility in the large meeting room. And then finally, the application deadline for the HR Communications Coordinator closed on Thursday of last week, I received about a dozen applications, I spent zero time looking at them since I was gone last week and didn't get to it today, but I hope to start going through those, and then we'll begin establishing a schedule for the interviews, et cetera, so hopefully there's a good one. And just, as an aside, I was talking about some HR-related stuff with some folks up at the conference, and they're saying, they're seeing fewer number of applicants for jobs, I think that's just a sign of economic times, I think we're, there's a lot of people that are employed now, and so, people that are looking for jobs now are just trying to better their job versus just trying to find a job, so I guess that's a good thing, it may not be a good thing for us, but as we saw with both our clerk position and our building official, we didn't get a vast number of applicants, but we got two really good people.
Good quality.
All you need is one good one, so.
That's right, okay.
So, that's the update I have, I don't know if staff has anything else that they want...
Public Works, are we, do we have a seasonal hire yet?
We're working on that right now, the, not to, we had a deadline common goal, but that was just to guarantee a chance to interview and get, we're seeing fewer numbers for that, but we're working on that, I'll be working with, talk with Mr. Peters about that today, I think we've got a few more people that are interested, so we hope to establish that here pretty soon.
And are we targeting maybe June-ish for another, the next newsletter?
Yeah, I think we'd like to, it's just, it's been down the ton of pole as far as priorities for us, but we talked a little bit about it today, about, you know, putting together a list of stories for the, it sort of writes itself, you kind of know what's happened since the last one and what you're trying to anticipate coming up, so we have a number of ideas, it's just actually getting some staff people to do it, the HR Communications Coordinator, it'd be great to have them in place for that, but I guess they'll get to work on the third quarter newsletter.
Yeah, there you go, okay. Any other staff reports, otherwise? Yeah, I would like to also say thank you to the Police Department, especially Amy and Brad, as well as our Public Works Department for both events in the last month here. Excellent job, thank you for your dedication and for your hard work, and also staff, administrative-wise, I'm sure you put in time as well, and also, it was fun to see fellow councilmembers, sorry, no, Patricia, you were out of town, but it was a nice day, put in an order for good weather, so at least it didn't rain, and, but just on a, kind of the same note, I think all of our employees really have been toeing the line, they've really worked hard these last five months, we've gotten a lot accomplished, you're excellent, service to the city is very much appreciated, Mr. Hornby included, Mr. Beatty, I know you're contracted, but we really appreciate all the hard work and professionalism that you have brought, and it's because of you and the decisions the council has made, mostly unanimous, I might add, that we've been able to make strides that we have, so thank you very much, Trista Days was great as well. I'm Northwest League, I was there last week, Commissioner Johnson was our guest speaker, interesting, and just kind of filling us in on some of the Hennepin County issues, and I was also at the Mayor's Association Meeting in downtown Minneapolis, again, very interesting, I won't go into details since it's getting kind of late, so with that, I'll pass it on.
No meetings attended since the last council meeting, however, there is a Parks Commission meeting on Tuesday, June 9th, so I will be attending that.
Pioneer Sur Creek Meeting is on Thursday, and Spirit of the Lake, just working with people via email at this point, getting details nailed down.
I have just a couple of things, one, we're in the process, the Board, the Board of the Weston Community Commerce is in the process of, in the planning stages of a major event we're trying to do, it's going to be called the Taste of Taca, and that's going to be held Saturday, September 19th, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. I'm going to hold off on any information right now because it's in the planning stages. The purpose of this is to give the members, of which obviously Minutrista is a member of, exposure and benefits for the members. The other thing we're doing right now is, we are holding a fundraiser, which is a raffle, and so, some of the members are now currently selling raffle tickets, they're $20, there's a limited amount that's being sold, the drawing will be held at the Spirit of the Lakes, the Weston Community Commerce will have a business showcase at the Spirit of the Lakes, of which in that time, the drawing for the door prize, which will be a Levano ThinkPad Notebook Computer, has a value of $1,400, so that is the fundraiser, and the money for that, that we raise from that is going to go for a person, a part-time person that we're looking to hire to help us with the social media and social networking, which will benefit, again, all the members of Weston Community Commerce.
Thank you, okay. With that, we're done, I believe, we could sit here longer if you'd like, otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.